All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:00 PM. We welcome you to the American Fork City Council Meeting this evening. It's November 11th of the year 2025. We appreciate everybody that's in attendance and the vast audience that is watching us online at home or wherever they might be. We're going to begin with a public hearing, and so we're here to receive public comments on amendments to the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026 city budget. Anybody that would like to make a comment, we ask you to come forward at this time, state your name for the public record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment, the public hearing, and we'll move on to our regular session. We'll begin now with a pledge of allegiance, after which we'll have an invocation by Council Member Hunter, and then I will conduct the roll call. If everybody would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to be here this evening and to participate in our council meeting. We're grateful for all those who have put time and energy into our agenda and to helping us prepare. We're grateful for our staff, for our elected officials, and for all those who put in the time and energy to be able to put this together, most especially, Father, this day, for the veterans and all of those who serve and stand in harm's way to protect our way of life, freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for those who serve currently and for their families. We pray blessing to be upon them, watch over and protect them, and be with them, comfort them. Father, we're grateful for all that we have. We're grateful for the wonderful circumstances that we find ourselves in, and we pray that we might be good stewards, that we might be able to lead the affairs of the city in a way that would be pleasing to our residents and appropriate with our stewardships that we've been asked to carry, the mantles that we have. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. I will now conduct the roll call. Councilmember Hunter.
Here.
Councilmember Holly.
Here.
Councilmember John.
Here.
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Tater.
Here.
Okay, for item number two, I'm gonna switch spots. In a planning a city, over the course of time, it takes a lot of work and it has a lot of eyes that see it, and there's a lot of deliberation, time for the public to make comments and give input. Even the smallest of things that we do with land use can affect the city for generations, and we know and understand that. We stand on the shoulders of the city council does of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is a key component to see things through a lens that we can then read upon their deliberations. We take all those questions that they have, that they become at our disposal, and they make recommendations to the city council. And we have a great Planning Commission, and historically, over time, it's just been something that we have relied and trusted on. Right now, leading our Planning Commission is the Chair, is Christine Anderson. I'm gonna have her come forward at this time, if you wouldn't mind. Now, I will, I need to tell you right up front, this is something that is not going to be a surprise to her this award tonight. It's something that she's already received. She received it last month at the Utah Chapter of American Planning Association. But I thought, you know, we heard about it after the fact, but we want to put it on public record. And things that we do in this meeting, like the Planning Commission, become a public record in perpetuity, and we didn't want this to go unnoticed. Let me tell you a little bit about this award that she received, and then I'll read the nomination for her. The Gene Moser Award. It's awarded to a person who is neither a professional planner nor an elected official for a significant contribution to excellence in planning. Nominees may be, may be a commissioner, member of a development board, or an appointed official, or interested citizen living within the state of Utah. Now, if I could just read to you her, the letter that actually got her noticed, that was made by Patrick. Thank you, Patrick. Christine Anderson has demonstrated exceptional dedication and leadership in the field of community planning as the long-serving Chair of the American Fork Planning Commission. Her service on the commission spans many years, during which she has provided thoughtful guidance, fostered constructive public engagement, and championed smart, sustainable growth for the community. In addition to her local leadership, Christine has contributed to the broader planning profession as the APA Utah Citizen Planner Liaison, advocating for the vital role citizens planners play in shaping the future of Utah cities. Her ability to balance vision with practicality while maintaining an unwavering commitment to the public good embodies the spirit of the Gene Moser Award. Christine's deep knowledge, collaboration, collaborative spirit, and passion for community makes her a truly deserving nominee. Well, I'm gonna tell you, that went from a nominee to the actual recipient of this award. So, we're going to be re-rewarding her tonight in front of the public and thank her publicly for all her good work. So, thank you. That's it. Maybe just say a few things?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Patrick. That was very kind of you. I've been doing this for a long time, and I have a lot of people to thank over those years. Our city staff has always been incredible. We have such great staff and such great engineers to work with. Thank you, all of you, for the work that you're doing, all the people behind the scenes who are doing so many things. Planning is just a really special thing to be a part of. I teach a class part-time at the high school, and I'm teaching these amazing youth, and I'm thinking, the things that we're doing here today, and, you know, at home when we're studying the issues, is for those kids, and not only for them, but for their parents and for all of us to have a good quality of life. And I believe in the work that we're doing for equity and for quality of life for everyone in our community. And I believe in planning because, sometimes it takes a little bit of belief because the work that we're doing maybe will happen much later. You know, we'll see the fruits of it much later. So, it takes a lot of patience, but it's a really important thing to be a part of. So, I'm proud to work with all of you, and thank you so much.
Let's just, let's do a little stat picture. Yeah, that's gonna be annoying. Yes. You know what? I saw that seatbelt. Absolutely. Yeah. I just want you back in.
Congratulations, Christine.
Okay, well, now move on to item number three. It's time we set aside for anybody that'd like to come forward and state an opinion or an expression to the mayor, the council, the senior staff. We'd ask if you do come forward to state your name for the public record, and limit your comments to about two minutes. So, we have an open mic. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item number four, our city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, congratulations to Christine on getting this award. She is so deserving. I've had the pleasure of being in attendance at Planning Commission every now and then, not often, but every now and then, and she does a fantastic job, getting the Planning Commission on task, making sure they're covering the things they need to cover, and then helping them understand the issues and make really good decisions. So, thank you for all that you do there. I remember one time, she told the story that her husband, John, gave her a map with just dots, pins, of everywhere in the city that the Planning Commission had made decisions on, or had a, there was some kind of a, something going on in the city that related to the Planning Commission, and this map was just filled. It was just a map of American Fork City, and there were just pins everywhere in the whole city. And so, Christine truly has affected the whole city. So, thank you for all of your hard work and your great decisions. Appreciate that. I just want to thank the Cemetery Committee for the great program that they put on today. The Veterans Program is, it's one of a kind. It's so neat to go every single year and see this program, and there's such a spirit there, a spirit of thankfulness for all of the veterans that have served our country and who serve our country today. And Councilmember Holly, we really appreciate you and your service as well. He kinda outshone the rest of you council members up there in his Marine Corps uniform. We appreciate Brigadier General Franzen for his leading of the ceremony today, although he did invite the fifth graders to clap a lot, and it was kinda fun. So, it was a great, is a great time, and we really appreciate that. Coming up on our schedule, we will have a tree lighting ceremony on November 25th, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 at the Robinson Park, and there will be a special guest come to that tree lighting ceremony. And I know the mayor really likes getting his picture with Old Saint Nick when he shows up to town. So, that'll start at 6:00. We invite the public to join us at Robinson Park and watch those lights get turned on. Just want to say to our Parks Department, thank you for all the hard work that they're putting in right now, making sure all those lights work and make sure they're all plugged in, and so, thank you to our Parks Department. That's all I have to report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, David. Now, move on to our council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make a note of the 25th. I couldn't, I didn't, I missed the date, so. I had the opportunity to start my service, well, I guess, on the council side. Prior to joining the council, I was on the Planning Commission with Christine, and had a great time for a couple of years doing that, and it was always just very rewarding. I appreciate it, and congratulations to you. It's a lot of years of service, for sure, so thank you for what you do. I also, I know everybody's gonna mention Veterans Day, but it's an important one. It's funny how it touches us all differently, and I just couldn't, you know, Lloyd Togisalo was the speaker today, and hearing him call and speak about the Triangle of Death that he mentioned, and that being Kevin and his wife, where Nathan was ultimately, gave his ultimate sacrifice. It just bring, every time I'm in there, I'm sitting there booming like a little baby, and I don't know, I, this last weekend, we actually got to go and see my son in Texas and his wife. He's serving down in San Angelo, Texas, in the Air Force, and to be able to spend time with him and then have that come full circle, came home last night, and then go to that and listen to the realities of what is real for so many people, and even if it's, General Franzen mentioned the idea of just the families and the time away, what happens when, you know, the kids don't even know where they're at, where Dad's at or Mom's at, somewhere in Europe, you know, he mentioned that. It just, I don't know, it just, it means a ton, and I just want to, for all of those who are in our, in our area, residents of our city who do serve and are, and have served, man, thank you. I don't, that's such a trite thank you, but I don't know what else to say other than just, I'm glad we don't get everything right in American Fork. I've said that before, but dang it, we do that one right. That Memorial Day and Veterans Day programs are spot on, and I couldn't be more proud to be a part of those. So, thanks for letting me be a part of that, and sorry for taking the thunder on it, so. No, we'll just skip past, yeah, that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Holly.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for those kind words, Ryan, and also David as well. One little thing of business around the Cemetery Committee, they met last week, and they voted to keep the cemetery wall as is for right now, at least. They did a lot of thinking and discussing and everything, so they're gonna keep it to just people who are buried in the cemetery for the wall, because they had talked about maybe people who had lived here and things like that, so. And they do want to still present their discussion and kind of their results to the city council at some point. And so, I just want to say thank you to the Cemetery Committee too, and everybody who put in the work to bring that program together. Every year, it's a lot of work, a lot of coordination. Lloyd kinda talked about it a little bit, like finding a speaker sometimes can be difficult, and so, all the work and planning that goes into that is a multi-month project, and really appreciate it for everything and everyone who puts time into that. And something that Bruce said during that is about the Vietnam people, Vietnam veterans who weren't given the proper treatment they were supposed to get, and so, to live in a city like Ryan mentioned, where veterans are not only supported, but really loved and honored and respected, is something that means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to all the other veterans, and it really just means a lot to the residents overall that we take care of our veterans and respect what they've done. Something that Bruce, I think Bruce mentioned, but I was looking over the names today, just kind of glancing over them, because, you know, sometimes we hear them and we just don't really think about much, but I noticed that for World War I, there was a Reno Wagstaff, and then in World War II, there was a Jack A. Wagstaff, and I couldn't connect the family connection. I'm sure they're related in some way, being back in the early 1900s. But I looked up Jack A. Wagstaff, and he was a World War II KIA, and he died May 1st, 1945. And for those who know their history, VE Day was May 8th, 1945. And so, it's just one of those things that you think about, is that he was so close to ending the war, and he still gave his life, he's still out there fighting a week before we declared victory, and to give his life for it. Those are the kind of people that we have in our city, those are the kind of people that have served and sacrificed so much for our city. So, I just, I'm just proud to be a small part of that, being in the Marine Corps, and so, anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna say anything about Veterans Day ceremony except kudos. It's all pretty much been said, but thank you, Tim, for your service. We appreciate it, and I kinda feel a little out of place when I'm up there. I know you belong up there, but you make us all look good. Thank you for what you do. Just a couple of quick things, Mr. Mayor. There is going to be a public hearing held on the 17th at North Point Special Service Districts at 6:00 PM for, we're going to modify our budget. We're not gonna affect the cities at all, but we have in excess of 10,000 mattresses a year go through the, through the dump, through the transfer station. Everybody's buying their mattresses online, and it's not the R.C. Willys and the, you know, Knights. It isn't any of those guys. They haul direct to the manufacturer when they do a change out. It's people that buy it from Walmart or Target or on the internet. And our recycler charges us $10 a mattress, and we were losing money. So, the way it was, is you got your first mattress free if you brought in a load, and so, we made the decision in the board that we're going to not make a free mattress anymore, so if you bring it, you're going to pay just the cost to recycle. We're not adding anything on for labor, anything else, just recycling costs. And I didn't know how you could recycle mattresses, so I went up to Salt Lake and seen their process. It's all done by hand. They cut them apart by hand, they clean everything off. If it's metal, then they crush it. It's an amazing operation, and just 10,000 mattresses in our landfill out west would cost us a lot more than $10 apiece, so we're glad that service is offered. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That's a kind of a fun fact of the day, really.
It wasn't water either, Ryan.
All right, Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, and honestly, Ernie, thanks for sharing that. That was really cool.
I'm gonna teach skilled kids that if I'm around them.
Well, I think it's important for us to understand the nuances of the things that we're responsible for, so I'm really grateful for that. I'll have to say, Christine, I did not know you got that reward until I got the agenda for this, so I'm actually really glad that we decided to do that here, because I don't know that we would have been able to have any sort of knowledge of it. So, I'm really glad. I jotted down a couple of things I wanted to point out that I have appreciated about your service and leadership. One is that I have seen you go to trainings with APA, which I didn't even know you were that involved with APA, but you're constantly interested in making sure you're up on the knowledge, the latest knowledge. I have seen you lead unruly meetings, both with maybe disparate comments from the Planning Commission and the citizens that are there, and always with calm and dignity, treating everyone with respect. I really appreciate that. That's so important to, in the Planning Commission. That is gold that we have that. I also, I really appreciate that you understand the effect that planning has on not just our community as a whole, but on individual people, and how we experience our city as individuals, and that's really important to me. So, I just want to say thank you for that, thank you for your work, and Patrick, thank you for noticing and nominating her, because that's a really big deal. That's my little, my little spiel on Christine, she's my friend, so. On Veterans Day, I just, I wasn't able to make it today. I was very sad. I, like you, Ryan, I very much appreciate that part of our city. It's one of the things that when I became a council member, I started to go every single time, and I hadn't before, and it has really shifted my focus on Veterans Day and Memorial Day, and I encourage every resident to go so that they can have that same focus. In the last year, I've actually started reflecting a little bit more. I've been reading some things, I've been working with more veterans, and it's given me a deeper understanding, and it also helps me to remember, sometimes I feel disconnected from veterans. At the same time, both of my grandparents are veterans of World War II, so it really is part of my own family history. They, I grew up hearing stories from them, so it is something that I have experienced in my own life, just a tiny little sprit, and I shouldn't say experience, but I have adjacent to. And I am, I'm becoming more and more appreciative as I go along. Always, I think there's a difference between saying you're appreciative and then understanding in a deeper level, and I feel like I'm becoming that. So, I'm glad that it's Veterans Day that we can stop for a moment and reflect on that. That's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Councilmember Tater.
Thank you, Mayor. Just reflecting on Christine's award tonight, I just, I want to talk about the difference that she's made, but also how much, you know, the Planning Commission, what an incredible organization. And I was on the first Planning, I was on the Planning Commission first in 1996, and it was one of the most miserable experiences I had ever had. I was coming in, I knew very little about anything, and it was a fight. It was a legal fight literally every night. We would go home at 12:30 or 1:00 every, every night. And then, I was also a councilman at that time, and the difference between now and then is literally night and day, and everyone had great intentions back then, I think. I say that seriously, I think. But for us to be able to go through a packet now, like we, like we have, even if we receive it on Thursday, Friday, whenever it is, to go through, there is such a confidence level that I have by reading what the Planning Commission says and the excerpts that we have from the Planning Commission. It makes me feel like we're completely prepared to discuss these things without being at the Planning Commission, and that is largely based on the chairperson and what they do and how they make things go. So, Christine, you know, kudos to you. You've done a great job for a number of years, and I recognize the value of that, and it has made a tremendous difference for us, and it's always a head-scratcher for me that the Planning Commission doesn't receive a stipend or something because of the time and the effort that they put in. And it's just, it's just such an incredibly valuable part of our city, and you do a great job, and congratulations on a very worthwhile and worthy honor you received. And then, you know, I'm along, along the lines of Stacy. I think about all of the fifth graders there today, and they were enthusiastic when they're clapping. And I was raised in a home with great respect for the military. I had an uncle who was in Special Forces, I had grandparents, I, you know, I understood that, at least I thought. But what I wouldn't have given to have the experience these fifth graders have, I remember the first time I was at, it was actually the Memorial Day program, and we had our high school band play the tributes to the, the Armed Forces, and you would see these men and women stand up as the Coast Guard or the Army or the Marines was played. And now, today, just so humbling to see these older gentlemen who were there today, two from World War II, standing up and having the people who loved them with their hand on their back, helping them stand up. Did you see the gentleman that was off to the east side of the tabernacle? And his son was just holding his arm, holding his back. And he stood up for the Army, he stood up for the Navy, I believe he stood up for the Air Force as well, and from World War II. And such a, such a great experience. Man, I wish I would have had that back then. The level of appreciation that I would have had, and those words that are spoken, and then to know our good friend Kevin and his family and what he's gone through. And this probably isn't the appropriate time, but, Tim, this is the, this is the reason that I'm pushing to have all of our veterans on those, on those walls, because they are sons and daughters of American Fork. And maybe their family took them away, or maybe they couldn't even find a spot in American Fork Cemetery to be buried. They were still our sons and daughters who went and fought in conflicts and served, and I think that's such a little thing, to be able to have a hometown person who spent, let's say, set a threshold, 20 years in our great city, to have their name etched on there as those who served their country from our great city, I think is just, that's the whole reason I brought it forward. And I would hope we would get a chance to discuss that, because, you know, it's your hometown, it's your hometown, and you served your country, and you should be recognized some way for, for that. And I don't think a past ordinance, by virtue of it being a past ordinance, should be the only thing that keeps us away from doing that, so. And I know you'll be open-minded about it, and I know you'll be objective about it. And then finally, I don't think you understand how humbling it is to sit there on that bench and look over and see someone in their dress uniform, and respectfully, in their dress uniform, sitting there and standing up in silence while we're all putting our hand on their heart, being directive. It has quite an effect, Tim, has quite an effect, and just really appreciate that. I just love the city we live in, I love being able to be associated with these different things that take place, and it makes today so much more than November 11th, and I just sincerely appreciate that, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you for that report. For the mayor's report, I echo, you know, that's just every sentiment that has come from, for Christine, the Planning Commission. Thank you so much. I was going to mention the very same story that David did. I think we were at a dinner, and that was mentioned around us, and I can only imagine, if you're still doing it, there is a something in your house somewhere, and there, it pins everywhere. That's pretty, pretty special, and had, it's what a visual to actually see that. And then, you know, on my day today, I went out and I almost forgot, and I looked over to my neighbors, and he had his flag out, and I thought, I knew about this ceremony, but yeah, I went and got the hammer, and I pounded it in at about 7:00 and put my flag out, and that started the day. And my mind has just been about this country all day long. Going to that Veterans Day program, the vantage point that we have, we sit up there and we look out, and, you know, the kids were great. They were, they were bam-bunchous as kids can be, but, you know, there's lots of words that are spoken to evoke emotion. I think the kids took it in, but maybe the most powerful point of the program is when there's only names read, and it's very, very quiet, and it's reverent as they read the names of, I think, 54, maybe 57 people that were residents of American Fork. I think we were at a dinner, and that was mentioned around us, and I can only imagine, if you're still doing it, uh, there is a something in your house somewhere, and there, it pins everywhere. That's pretty, pretty special. And had, it's but a visual to actually see that. Um, and then, you know, on my day today, I, I went out, and I almost forgot. And I looked over to my neighbors, and he had his flag out, and I thought, I had, I knew about this ceremony, but yeah, I went and got the hammer, and I pounded it in at about 7 o'clock and put my flag out, and that started the day. And my mind has just been about this country all day long. Going to that Veterans Day program, um, the vantage point that we have, we sit up there and we look out, and, you know, the kids were great. They were, they were bamboozled as kids can be, but, you know, there's lots of words that are spoken to evoke emotion. I think the kids took it in. But maybe the most powerful point of the program is when there's only names read, and it's very, very quiet. And it's reverent as they read the names of, I think, 54, maybe 57 people that were residents of American Fork and died in battle. And we, you know, it hasn't changed much. I think Nathan Barnes was the last one, and it's never gets old of just continually to read them names. Get into our, it's, it's familiar a little bit to those names. And you hear names like Inger Saul, and you're thinking, yeah, we know that family. We know that family. And the story that might be told about every one of them names and how they were brought back to American Fork and how they claim American Fork is their, their hometown. I've always been proud that American Fork has America's name in it. And it's one of three cities in the country that has America within its name. And I think it's something, I don't know, I tout it. I think it's, uh, unique, and it's something that we have leaned into and we embrace it. Uh, at the park over here, Robinson Park, you're gonna notice that today that there is a big tree. It's called the Freedom Tree. And we learned a lot about the Freedom Tree a couple of years ago when we brought Captain Chipman home. And Captain Chipman was an MIA from Vietnam, and 50 years missing in action, and then they found a portion of his remains. That will be, uh, without a doubt, one of the very, just top experiences that I've ever had in my life, let alone being the mayor, to go up to the, to the airport, to go out on the tarmac and to see that coffin come through and the family. Um, and then we brought him into American Fork, back to his hometown, and, uh, his family was there along the way. UHP and the police, they just paved the way. It's just like traffic's just moved out, and we brought him into his hometown. And then we learned about the Freedom Tree and when it was planted and how. So, it is lit up tonight, and it will stay lit up until after the holidays. And I will have a few minutes with Santa on the 25th, as we discussed. Um, but only a minute or two because the kids aren't there to hear from the mayor when Santa's in the, in the house and in the area. But the first thing they're gonna hear from my lips is, we're gonna talk about the tree. It's the only tree at the time that's lit up. And that tree being lit up really is what gives us the ability to hit the switch and light the whole city up, all of Main Street. But for that tree and what it represents, um, it's hard to know what America would be. And so, the Freedom Tree will, there's a social media post, I think, to explain that. Uh, it's, it's a new tradition that happened since Captain Chipman. And so, when you're going home tonight, go by the park, and you're gonna see a big old tree that was planted in, in his honor and all veterans' honors. So, American Fork's a great place to live. That is the mayor's report. I'll now move on to the Common Consent Agenda. It is made up of the four items that are before you. There have been no requested minute changes, but from the packet, there was a site plan that was added. It was amended, but it was added to that. It was part of the action that we did that night in the minute. She just wanted to make sure that, to make everybody aware that she added a site plan. Um, that was a note from Terrell. Any questions from the council on the Common Consent, Common Consent Agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the Common Consent Agenda.
Yeah, a motion by Councilmember Taylor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunter. Any discussion on this motion? Yeah, call for a vote. Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Okay. Item number one is a review and action on resolution approving a land use map amendment for properties located approximately 400 East on 1100 South. The land use map amendment will be approximately 30.52 acres. The proposal looks to change from designed industrial land use designation to residential medium-density land use designation. Patrick, thank you. By the way, if I haven't told you, you sure look good tonight.
Thank you. Yeah. Trying to look a little bit better than Sam. It's hard sometimes, but not too. Um, this, uh, this property is adjacent to, um, land that was brought before to Planning, uh, Planning Commission and City Council a couple of months ago. Um, their proposal was approved to increase the land, or increase the, sorry. Their proposal was approved to change the land use from residential low-density to residential medium-density. Um, the reason it's being brought forward is that as we, uh, look at some of the changes that, um, we're looking to make in our general plan update, this is one of those, um, areas that we see having a minor, uh, jump in density is something that we're, we're trying to achieve in that area as it makes sense in that, in that corner space. Um, but it also would allow a proposal between two different groups to move forward, um, with the residential intention that the city was looking at and not with the, um, any planned industrial or light industrial use upon an annexation. As you're aware, when a property annex is into the city, we're required to follow our, um, the underlying land use, which then informs the zoning. Um, so the proposal of that change is something that we had discussed with the property owners. Um, they were supportive of, um, us making that change on, or at least petitioning to make that change on their behalf, um, rather than the land be left with the light industrial designation. Um, the applicants here, if you have questions that, um, would be specific to their, um, to their overall intention for development with the land, um, the area that is being proposed with this, um, petition for the land use, uh, change is for the unannexed portion of land. There's still some land that falls within two, uh, within the boundary of what they would propose for future development. That's currently under some different land use and also a different, um, different zoning. I believe it's significantly lower zoning in that as a, um, that would potentially need to be changed as well for an overall master plan anticipation that, uh, a number of property owners are looking to, to do. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions on the petition to change the land use, and if you've got anything for the, uh, for the applicant. I believe they're here as well, just in relation to their, um, future proposal.
I would like to address the panel again. If you could just state your name through the microphone.
Sure. I'm Dane Hill. I work with Property Reserve.
Dane, tell us a little bit about the project that you're looking to bring forward.
Would be residential. Um, we're looking to do, um, kind of more affordable targeted housing, um, small lot residential and maybe some townhomes, shooting for kind of a six to seven units per acre density.
Um, are you, is this going to be a development that will be by ownership to, to individuals?
We are looking at doing a for-rent community that is owned and operated by us. Um, however, we're not, like, finalized on that idea yet. We have done several, um, built-to-rent communities in Utah, including one in, um, Riverton, Saratoga Springs, and a few other communities. Um, generally, they're very high-quality. Um, we have highly amenitized pools, um, community center, things like that, well-maintained. And, um, we plan to, if we do develop it in this fashion, we would, um, own and operate it long-term. Um, I think the thought is that working with the, um, other landowner who is developing the residential next to us, that, um, as they develop, there'll be some for, for-sale opportunities, and then we would provide the for-rent opportunities so there'd be a mix of ownership and rental opportunities for different needs.
You know, you're buying a wonderful park, right? Have you probably seen that?
Oh, yeah. We're excited about that opportunity and providing that amenity to people.
I, you know, I, I'm more concerned about the rent portion, although, you know, I'm just one person. I, I don't know if we're gonna legislate that. Uh, but I just, you know, I think it's the American dream of affording a house, especially in those areas, it's gonna be small lots. You know, it's probably the nearest thing to affordability that a person could, could consider without, you know, the quarter acre lot, you know, the things that we used to do. I think American Fork does really well at providing rental spaces in various forms. So, but, I don't know. What do you think, Council? Any questions that you have for that?
Well, I guess, so is this gonna be an HOA community? Is that the idea? That this will be HOA?
Um, yeah, it, it wouldn't be an HOA community. It would be privately owned and, uh...
I'm sorry, it would not?
Yeah, no, it would be privately owned, as I mentioned.
Well, you still have HOA, though. I mean, like even, so I have a, so I own a townhouse in Orem, and there are rentals and ownership, and they're, um, HOA still, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the idea would be that there's no need for an HOA 'cause it's all privately owned and managed.
Okay.
So, um, an HOA really helps with individual ownership and kind of collective management of a community. But because this is all privately owned and managed, we have onsite property management, onsite leasing, things like that to maintain the quality of the community.
So, I guess another question. So, the other one that we just, um, changed, the density, so are you doing a shared project? Because I thought that's kind of the idea, is that you were working together to have one community? And if they're gonna do ownership, and then you're gonna do more rentals, is it gonna be two separate communities?
Um, they'll be right next to each other, so they'd be separate communities, but kind of in the same area. So, right north to us, ownership opportunity, and then the south. I think the idea really is that people moving up from apartments also need a place to live. Um, it provides kind of a good lock and leave for people. It provides a good opportunity to have a safe community that has, you know, onsite property management, as I mentioned. And, um, you know, single moms, uh, service members, things like that, really seem to gravitate towards these types that maybe they don't have the opportunity to get into the ownership market right away, but it gets them into the community, gets them a place that's safe, comfortable, has all the amenities they like. And then hopefully, they have the opportunity to kind of move to other ownership opportunities in the city of American Fork.
I do have one comment slash question. Um, I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment. I hate it, sorry. I hate it when people, like, actually have a comment, but they say it's a question, so I'll just caveat it with it's both. Um, I, I'm noticing that the design industrial, I'm just looking at the land use map that's on, in the packet. Um, it looks like we'd be creating essentially a pocket that's surrounded by design industrial. And that's something that we usually try not to do. That's more of a comment.
So, is that a question or is that a...
So, you mean just to be, we're divided by the, we're, we're divided by the railroad tracks, right? Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I know there's a railroad tracks there, but it's still like design industrial, all of this, all of this is design industrial.
Yeah, I guess what it would be is on the north side of the tracks, you would still have that strip that's Auto Mall Drive. And then to the south of 1100, you would have that. It, um, I guess it would be, yeah, it would be kind of a enveloping of some of the space with that, but it would be connected to existing residential land use, um, on the west.
Yeah.
I mean, everything west of the train tracks and north of 1100 will be residential.
Even this square here? It's the square right next to the...
The church building. That's what I was... That's true. So, that, that was one of the things, and that is an error on our part, that what was included for the land use change is the unannexed land. The, that piece right there is still, is annexed into the city, and it's something that we would be addressing separately. Could have been addressed...
Right, but the land use for that area is design industrial currently.
Correct, yeah. Um, I think there's, there isn't a church building on that one.
There, there's an existing church building.
So, yeah, so the land use is that, the zoning for that, though, this is where we've had issues in the past. The zoning is R1-12,000. So, that's annexed into the city right now.
Yeah.
But it's zoned as R1-12,000. The land use still needs to be updated for that. This is just...
So, in the middle of that R1-12,000 is the church?
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I don't know that I have too much heartburn over it going, um, be turning into residential, although I, I am a little bit concerned if people are living around the industrial and they're like, why did you build this here? Because that is a little odd. So, I am a little bit concerned about it, about changing it to residential altogether, but I am deeply concerned about creating higher density. And for me, higher density is anything that's really not a single-family lot or maybe a duplex I could handle. But our residents, we just went through an election, and I can tell you, we got screamed at about high-density housing. That one was a comment.
Mayor, if I could, um, I just, I, I guess I have a couple of things. As I was looking at the, well, there's a difference between R, what, somebody's gotta help me. I'm not a master at this. Christine probably is. She could help me. R2-7500, not an overlay, correct?
Correct.
We're not doing an overlay? Cause there is...
We're not doing any zoning at present. This is land use.
Right, but with the intention of creating an R2-7500 zone?
Um, I'm not sure if we had discussed that. It was coming in as R2-7500.
Okay, maybe I read that somewhere else. I guess my concern there is that there's a difference between an overlay and not, and that's, this is, it's backwards now, and I know this is why I'm confused by it, but that, that was my question 'cause there is a difference of, or a difference of what can be allowed with the widths of the lots?
Correct, because you can do an R2-7500, uh, for the overlay, which allows you to do a...
6,000 square foot lot in a 7500 square foot...
6,000 square foot, single-family detached lot versus, uh, so it wouldn't be a duplex at the 6,000 square foot lot.
Oh, it could be. Well, it wouldn't be a duplex on 6,000. It would be a 12,000 square foot lot with 90-foot widths as opposed to a 75-foot width, single-family.
And I think it's actually a 60-foot width when it goes to 6,000 square foot lot, or, yeah, 60-foot width.
45 is what I read, but, but, anyway. I realize we're not there, but that's why this is confusing to me to, to bring it forth, and I understand why we're talking about it now. This is the parcel that I was talking about when we brought in the other parcel, 'cause this is the third time this has been in, right? Well, technically, second for this parcel, third for the overall project. Originally, it came in as one combined group, then it came back in for the portion that was discussed a month-ish ago. Now, we're back for the other half. It's this eastern side.
I don't think the combined one ever came to the council. It was anticipated that it would, and then it was...
Okay.
It was posed by the applicants to separate projects.
Um, I, and I guess, and the reason I bring this up is because a little of the concern that I have with the, uh, Councilmember Carroll mentioned, was the conversation about the parcel on the west. It's the neighboring, not necessarily related, but somewhat adjacent, similar development, was nope. The reason we need to increase the, from residential low-density to residential medium-density is because nobody wants to live on the backside of a train track with trains behind you. Well, if that's the case, then why are we converting it from industrial commercial to a residential zone at all? Because if that's the justification for needing to increase it to a higher-density use, wouldn't it make sense to leave it as an industrial commercial component? I think that, that's, that's where I come from. This is...
The reason we had looked at it from staff is that the discussion that we have had when he was a council before was that we wouldn't be permitting anything north of 1100 South to be industrial or light industrial. And this falls into that along with the train tracks, but we also have train tracks in significant, like, the entire way along the rest of the city, and we've got significant residential development there, too. But then also, we changed south of this area and pulled out a bike lane because we also didn't want people, we anticipated people would not wanna bike through an industrial area, but then they may not wanna live right adjacent to an industrial area, too. So, it's a balancing of what.
And that, that is one of them that I've written down, and I appreciate you mentioning it. So, the bike path that is on the north side, well, it's actually a significant path. It's not a...
It's shared use.
This is, yeah, there's like, it's like a 12, the cross-section on that north side of the 1100 South road. It's like 12-foot of bike path plus a sidewalk. Anyway, it's significant, but it's a main thoroughfare.
And that was, and that change was made because of taking out the connectivity, um, further south to ensure that we had continued regional connection on... on our east, because we had severed that eastern, east-west, um, regional connection. So we had to try and tie it in somewhere else, and that was the most, that made the most sense to us, as it went adjacent to the future park as well.
Where does that, and I totally agree with that. It's why I'm probably leaning to moving that direction, because that whole triangle of development south of the train and north of 1100, being connected with that major pedestrian, whatever we're calling that, highway?
Thoroughfare?
Thoroughfare, it's massive, it's big. Can you remind me, residential medium density?
Can be all R17500 to the R2, potentially R37500s.
So R3, so it could be a triplex?
It would be, the reason that we're bringing it forward as this, with that, and with understanding that we have the ability to limit that through the annexation agreement.
Right.
And specifying the overall density for all of the parcels, which we've spoken to all of the applicants about. They're okay with that, because that, they just need that little...
As a max of what, R27500?
I'm, I'm not sure what zoning we were looking at. We were just talking about the six to seven units max per acre as the density.
Okay.
And we're still trying to look at how the, what zoning it falls, falls into.
And then using the annexation agreement as a way to bind the, I love the term, bind.
I think you guys are all okay with, because it's, it's the best...
See, and this is, this is why I think that one was...
Well, I mean, we still have that ability.
And then that was also going to be owner-occupied.
Yeah, I mean, when the annexation agreement comes, we do have the ability then to approve or not approve the exact zone.
Correct.
That it's, that it's annexing it.
And that, that's all I want to make sure, is that those are the conversations, because that's what I was hearing. When I hear six, seven, I'm thinking, "Well, I thought it was five, six."
That was the owner-occupied, and this is just a different product type as well. That was, those are single, single-family, single-detached. They had a couple of townhomes along the... And I guess some, some of this is what, what Dane had shown. There's an anticipation, I guess, of a, of a land swap to square out the developments, rather than having, um, one development have all of the frontage, and then no frontage for the other development, that they would swap and essentially come down to, um, halfway along, halfway along 100 East. And that would be the Piran development, and then the PRI development would be the lower half of that triangle. But still, still conceptual until everything's finalized, yeah.
So we're talking about land use, and we still have the ability, when the annexation agreement comes through, to dictate what that's...
As long as we will remember that that's the conversation that we were talking about. Because if every time we have another conversation, it jumps up like from five to six, to six to seven, and then seven to eight, now all of a sudden we went from five to eight, that's my, that's my, that's the concern that Stacy and I have heard nonstop for ninety days.
Yeah, we're, we're...
I mean, you're all hearing that, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically the same conversation that I had with the other property, is I, I am in favor of smaller lots, but it's the higher density that I'm feeling is the pressure from residents. I, and that's why I made a clarification on what I consider higher density, because that's where, that's where I'm feeling it.
It's funny, because we all, we all digest this in different ways. So my go, my go button was the fact that they were owner-occupied.
Yeah, agreed, that was a big deal, too.
You could move in there and buy and own a home, buy your own piece of...
Yeah.
You know, so that's, that's where I was coming from on that.
Agreed.
And then, you know, five to six, I was sure that was it, so... I don't even remember that nobody wants a house against the train tracks. You brought that up to me multiple times, but, um, but you were raised there, so it's a different feeling for you, so, um, yeah.
I agree, that was a big part of the decision for me as well. The owner-occupied, smaller lots were desirable.
And then, you know, we had everything from the deep, the deep driveways, that we wouldn't have cars parking on the street. We had all of those things, they were, they were making it respectable, well.
And that, I will say that my assumption is that PRI will be the, kind of an owner. You referenced several different developments in Riverton and Saratoga Springs. Those were owner-occupied, correct?
No, the developments we've done have been for rent developments, and we, we meet all the features that you've mentioned. Like, we do a higher-quality rental development than what is typical you see for a single-family for rent. We have deeper driveways, um, so people aren't parking on the street. Parking's not an issue for us. And our intent is to have a long-term ownership structure. So we overbuild the units, they're high ceilings, nice amenities, very high quality, um, with the intent that we have tenants in there who can be a part of the community, be around for a while, until they can establish and purchase their own home. Um, we'd be also happy to, if the council is interested, tour our existing product in Riverton, and to see the quality of development that we would intend to develop.
I would love Saratoga Springs and Riverton. I would love to, even just have the addresses.
Yeah.
Yep.
We can share that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Um, when you're talking about land swap, I only see four acres that's not owned by the church in this particular layout. So as of right now, you're coming as representing four acres, correct?
But the land swap he's talking about is with Piran's.
Yeah.
They would trade.
Which is the other stuff that was, is, was already approved in the last, so just to the west of...
To the west of those, those lots, okay.
That runs the whole way down on, from along First East to where 1100 south is.
Okay.
I would add, too, that we just have an interest in protecting kind of the area around the church, building qualitative development. We don't want to build something bad around the church, because obviously we're hard at that as well.
Sure. The improvements along 1100 north, how far south are you going on 1100? Is it to the middle, is it the middle of the roadway?
I don't know, I don't, I don't have that like that.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we're just doing the land use.
I know.
Yeah.
But we all know that's where it's headed, and I get ahead of myself, and I can't help but think about that.
Nope, it's the edge, it's not the middle of the road.
I don't know, Dave, you might, in terms of improvements?
It's not the middle of the road.
When, when...
I mean, then they start a, when an applicant develops, do they come to the center line of the road for where they have to do their improvements? Or is it the entire, the exception?
Okay.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, what is, what exists right now?
Questions? You know, I, I'm just gonna, I don't know if I've ever done this, but I think that this, this group's different. Um, and, um, I'm gonna challenge you. And I, and I'm, I'm gonna even ask you to maybe look into this option, and that is, we have a mandate from the governor to create affordable housing. And, you know, that has always been this, this buzz that we've heard, and we think, "How do we accomplish that?" How, how do you really do it? I, I have looked at areas that have these small lots, so, so small that the only thing you own is basically the envelope of the home, which is about the size of the garage, and it goes up four, four stairs. And it's just, I'm thinking, "That's gotta be affordable", because there's no property associated with it, yet it's not.
Not.
It's $550,000. But I think in this area, I think that there's a way to get really creative and unique, and I'm going to challenge you to do that in your discussions with Patrick, to think how you can be different, to create that, that model of, that might be the thing that we can all, you know, pattern after, to, to try to make something, uh, you know, the American dream come true for somebody that just couldn't in, in any other situation. I don't know, I, I just, I don't know what the answers are. I just feel like somehow we've got to get creative. And yours is a good group to get creative with, I think, and so...
Sounds like it would be a complete philosophy change, though.
Yeah.
Obviously, all of us would be just gangbusters over owner-occupied, but that's not your model. And, uh, yeah, it's just, I guess it's on us.
When I add that we are stakeholders in the community, we have this piece of land around the church height. We also have another 90-acre piece, which ultimately the intent would be for-sale residential, as we get to prepare to develop that one as well. So I think we're bringing multiple different housing types to American Fork.
They're gonna hold you to that now.
That's all right. We, we, we've looked at that one. That one, we think, is gonna be a much better fit for, for sale residential.
But your plan is to acquire and build your facility on 30 acres, right? The total acreage that's in Rock Forest right now?
I think it's about 30, 35 acres in the area.
Yeah, 30.68.
Because there's already existing, like incorporated land that's not just shown on this 30.68 piece.
And then to view our existing product, we have a website. It's Viviano at Riverton. So you can search that, that'll show you our existing models, what we're leasing them at. I think in American Fork, the lease rate would be lower. But it would be similar to the type of amenities and what type of maintenance, and you know, the type of quality of units.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Just maybe, and this might be a hard one. So when you say you want to own it, so you would own and manage it for the long haul? Are you talking like 10 years, 20 years?
We, we built them with the intent of managing them 30 years plus.
Okay.
So we don't have an exit strategy for these. These are long-term residential communities that we own and maintain.
How many units total do you plan on putting on?
You have to see the final acreage and what density would be acceptable to the city ultimately, when we kind of come to an agreement. I think that generally, our built-around communities have been about 300 units, give or take. Um, that unit amount allows us to kind of build up the size of amenities that we like to build, you know, the Lacy River, the pool, the splash pad that we put in, our one in Riverton. When you get to lower than that in the unit count, it makes it harder to justify that level of amenity.
So I have a quick question. Do you actually know where Viviano is? I have a friend that lives there. Are there single-family homes, or is that, I, I thought those are all townhouses. Are there actually single-family homes in there?
Yeah, there's single-family homes detached. And there's also, the idea is that everyone has a yard. Um, even the townhomes have a small space and pet-friendly.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I mean, there's a really, really nice community. It is really nice. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, I, I'm looking at...
You got the lazy river there in Viviano.
There, there are some single-family homes, too. They got the lazy river. I mean, I don't know, I doubt that, it is, it is a nice area.
All right.
Um, what, is R, R17500, what's, do you know the range of zones within, um, median density?
The R17500, um, potentially R17500 overlay, um...
R27500.
And then R27500. I have to check potentially the R37500, but, um, I know that's the higher end, so we wouldn't be going into that. It would be R1 or R2. If that doesn't work, a lot of it depends as well as when we get an application for annexation, combined with all of the property owners there, where we are with general plan update, code rewrite, because our zonings may be a little worded differently than what they are right now. So it might be something of having a specific zone, but granting densities or requirements in the development agreement to ensure that it meets all of the parameters that council wants to ensure, essentially if it's between a zoning. Ideally, if we can get it to fit into a zoning, that's the direction we want to go. Most straightforward approach, yeah.
Sorry, Dane, Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
Dane, you mentioned, did you say 300 units in your typical community?
Yeah, that's typical.
Okay.
Three, 300 units in this would be 10 per acre, am I right?
Unless we're, no, because we're adding in the other five acres, correct? Is that why we're...
There's more, that whole upside-down horseshoe around the churches.
Will be a part of this.
It's part of this?
Yeah.
It's, it's already incorporated into the city.
That's why it's not part of this discussion.
There's more than just the 30-ish acres.
Gotcha.
Um, and depending on what the final land area is with the, the other property owner as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'll just tell you, just so we're all clear, for me, I have no problem changing it. I think there's, there's argument to be said about changing it from industrial-commercial to residential. I have zero interest in having 10, even eight and a half units to the acre if we go to 35. But I, I love the mayor's comment, that, that sense of community is what we want. We want partners, we want a sense of community. We don't want a scenario where, ah, we couldn't put the lazy river in because that's the, you know, that's what everyone's kind of hanging their hat on is being able to do this. If it doesn't work, because you need 40 acres or 45 acres to be able to do 30 units, or 300 units to make that work with the amenities you're talking, then I think that has to just be transparent and upfront, because I, I know I won't be voting for something that's beyond maybe six or seven units to the acre, and I just want to make that clear upfront.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
I don't, I don't think there's any of us that would...
I think we're all about right there.
Fair, I do, yeah, I do, but I, again, I mean, six, I'm maxing out. There we go. So...
So I think, big picture, our intent is to be long-term stakeholders in American Fork. We want to make sure that we're building a good community that we can be proud of, and something that fits with the ethic and the place that is American Fork City.
Yeah, that's a key point. For us, Mayor, one of the real important things of that relationship with a developer is people who are interested in building a community.
Yeah, I agree. Sometimes we just, we seem come and go, which is fine. Those are really important things, so thank you for stating that. So, all right, council, any other questions? Or somebody wants to enter, you know, maybe come up with a motion? We'll see where we move on this.
Well, I mean, we, we can't be more specific than the change of the land use, correct? Yeah, so, I mean, and we'll, we'll rely on the annexation agreement to ensure that we get the units that we're talking about in order to make this go forward tonight. So I, I can take a shot at it unless someone else is...
I move to adopt, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution approving the land use map amendment located approximately 5300 west, 1100 south. Um, since that's not annexed, we're using the county address, American Fork City, from the design industrial land use to the residential medium-density land use designation, subject to any conditions found in the staff report. With instructions the city recorded with whole publication of resolutions, subject to all conditions identified in the public record of the October 22nd, 2025 planning commission meeting have been met.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, second by Councilmember Holly. Any discussion on this motion?
I, I just, and I kind of want to reiterate what Clark and Brian have said. I definitely want partners, and I like ideas for great projects we're building. But we've been burned before when it comes down to intent, and people who want to collaborate and stuff like that. And so whenever we get this annex agreement, it's gonna be very, very strictly and very well-written out. This is what it's gonna be, and it's kind of like to these kind of points, like six units break or things like that. So it's not that we don't trust you or anything like that, but, um, we do want a good partnership at a long term, so that's kind of the only thing, Mayor, is just, we're gonna be very strict when we get the annex agreement coming in.
We're, we're pretty good people to work with, but we, thank you for... I, I think it's reciprocal, so thank you very much. Okay, I have a motion, a second. I'm gonna call for a vote. Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
You guys are killing me. Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dane.
All right, item number two is review and action on a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six city budget. This is the intent of our public hearing today. For this, are there any questions? For Anna, thank you, Anna, for getting close, if we have questions, we'll bring her up.
I guess I have one quick question, I'm trying to pull it up and I can't see it right of hand. I just, I, so it's, once again, it's good that we got more sales tax, but I think a lot of the sales tax, at least in the first couple pages, went to salaries. And so maybe this is a waste of time just to kind of like hypothesize or speculate, like where would the extra wages for salary come from if we hadn't had an extra four hundred thousand dollars in sales tax?
That's your question, we typically budget very discernibly with sales tax being a lot for us. We've already seen revenue minimums, but are anticipated as sales tax for the year, so I feel comfortable using additional sales tax to cover those budget amendments, just from the few months that we've had so far this fiscal year. But most of the budget amendments are just carryovers from prior year and appropriations, so those were already budgeted prior year and raising fundamentals. So yes, there are more in here, adjustments that we're using, using our sales tax estimates to cover it. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, it just, like I see, like on the, as some of the things we talked about, when I see like a line for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in increased salaries or for something else, like, something else like ninety-six thousand dollars, and so, as I said, it's great and it's good that we do conservative estimations, but I just worry that if we ever were conservative with our sales tax estimate, but that actually came in right and accurate, and then we needed four hundred thousand dollars for salaries for our city employees, where would we pull that from? If we, like, so if we overestimate what, if I get this right, if we overestimate what sal, what sales tax was going to be, but underestimate what wages were going to be, then that could burn us at some point if the sales tax actually comes in flat. That's, that's my only point, I guess.
That's a great point, we are very careful on budgeting salaries, we do it by position, by personnel, so these were extraordinary circumstances. We did a salary arrangement for the lease, that was done after the budget was approved, that's required through nineteen thirty, so there was a test there. And then we had some staff turnover and administration, and so we reorganized a little bit for business license and that over the planning. And in fact, filled it with a small part tank for rent coverage, and so those were the two salary adjustments, again, were very critical. The budgeting salaries, you know, don't keep up lately, and so we look better currently, that's what they typically have back there.
I don't know if this gives you any solace, Tim, for as long as I've been here, I mean, we've always underestimated sales tax, always significantly. And so, I mean.
No, and that's great, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure, but.
And the reason I mention that too is just Provo, for instance, has had like declining salary tax for the last few years, I just know that because we have a business there, we think about that, my partner and I, and so, yeah, we're doing great here in American Fork and I appreciate all that we do. We talk about this every time we do a budget, it's just something that I think about, that if we ever get a sales tax wrong, where are we going to scrape out a few hundred thousand dollars, that's all. I know you do a great job, so I'm not saying that, but.
No, if I could, I just would add to it, because I, in addition to under anticipating sales tax, I think the, the most important thing is we've gone through the budget every time, is we never, this is a one-off thing, we've never, in my recollection, used sales tax to cover an increase in salaries. So I think it is a one-off thing, it's not something that we're seeing or we have done traditionally, at least as my recollection. We could, in this one instance, use general fund or reserve.
Reserve fund.
Fund balance to, to cover it, we have the opportunity in this year to use sales tax, but it certainly is not the expectation that going forward we would ever anticipate that to be the case, or we would plan for that. So that's, that's my take on it.
That's a great question, Councilmember, and I think, I think it points to the fact that the city is always looking at the budget, tightening the belt, trying to be more efficient with how we spend dollars, being very careful with every dollar spent. And I, and that's the responsibility, that's the fiduciary responsibility of the city council, and you guys do a great job. When we, when we do the budget process, we look at every single line item to make sure that that is absolutely necessary. And it gives a lot of confidence to the, to the citizens to know that that's how we budget, it's, it's very detailed, and we look at every dollar.
For the hundred and fifty people who look over that budget, I think they're very happy for that.
Yeah.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution adopting budget adjustments for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six budget.
I have a motion, a motion by Councilmember Holly, second by Councilmember Taylor, any discussion on this motion? Call for a vote, Councilmember Hunter.
Aye.
Councilmember Carol.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Holly.
Aye.
Okay, item number three is review and action on approval of granting an easement to Rocky Mountain Power on city property. Any questions on this? A little bit in the making, but it's made. Thank you.
So is this, sorry, it was yesterday that I read it, will they be digging up, is it the parking lot?
Right, this is on the east side of the parking lot, the administration parking lot.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It backs out along that border with.
And who will be paying for it to be buried?
This would be the developer.
They're installing the new fence as well as part of that, or?
Not, not as part of this agreement with Rocky Mountain Power, but yes, as part of the resubmitted site plan, they will be installing a fence around the project.
Okay, well, I move to approve the right-of-way easement agreement with Rocky Mountain Power as presented.
Yes, second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carol, second by Councilmember John, any discussion on this motion? Call for a vote. Councilmember Holly.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter.
Aye.
Councilmember Carol.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Item number four is review and action on a resolution approving the disposi- disposition of lost or mislaid property or seized property.
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the disposition of lost or mislaid property or seized property.
I have a motion by Councilmember.
Second.
Councilmember Holly, second by Councilmember Taylor, any discussion on this motion? Call for a vote, Councilmember Carol.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter.
Aye.
Councilmember Holly.
Aye.
Item number five is consideration of the appeal by Bach Homes on the denial by the Development Review Committee of the High Point preliminary plat approval. I've been thinking about this, and I'm open to suggestions, but I would say, I mean, I may ask Heather if she wouldn't mind just changing our mindset? Give us a, just, give us your take on the lens that we are looking at and, you know, just kind of bring us back to where we were when we tabled this, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, Mayor, would it be helpful to have Patrick come up and just give a brief procedural history? Or do you want me to just jump into where we are? I, I think the council probably understands, remembers.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so right now, the council is sitting as an appeal authority, and it is reviewing Lake City Road Bach Homes High Point Apartments' appeal from the DRC's determination denying their application for a final plat. It's a little bit tricky procedurally, because the application that was initially filed, of course, was the preliminary plat, but Bach wanted to move that forward to get that application before the council. So we're here under American Fork City Code Section seventeen point seven point two twelve, which provides that a developer may appeal to the city council, a denial of a final plat. The appeal shall be made in writing within thirty calendar days of the final decision of the Development Services Director. Committee, sorry, I'm just going to put that in there. At this point, the council, again, is sitting as an appeal authority, so you guys are reviewing the determination of the DRC to deny the applicant's land use application. The council may either affirm the DRC's denial, or they may overturn the denial of the application. You're sitting in your quasi-judicial capacity, not your legislative capacity, so keep that in mind. And you should make your determination based on the record, so all of the documents that have been submitted included in the packet, the arguments and representations that were made on the record at the first hearing, as well as anything else that comes into the record tonight. Does the council have any other questions for me about how, how, in what capacity we're, we're currently moving forward?
Maybe, maybe I do have, once, so if we were to approve or accept the denial, does it have to be based off of the DRC's reasoning? Like, if we felt for other reasons it should be denied, could we do that, or is it only because there's not the commercial element?
So you are reviewing just the commercial element, that is the issue that is before the council. And the application does have other technical and additional issues that would need to be addressed if the council were to overturn the DRC's decision and send this back for further land use review.
I guess the question, I think that we tabled this because it was, there was a lot of information that was provided, and it was, just felt rushed. So we wanted to, you know, just kind of look through it, have some time, so. I, to my knowledge, nothing new has been introduced to this. Is there, Patrick, can you say that there's something new besides what we have based upon our, when we tabled it?
Nothing additional from staff, Mayor. We still stand by what was presented from staff, based on the existing definitions of what mixed use is from the other, where it is not defined in our, in our code, from the other best practice areas throughout the planning profession, but also what was identified legally as well through definitions provided by legal resources and our association.
I'd ask the applicant, is there anything new that you feel like that we don't have our hands on, that we haven't sent from our last meeting?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, Stuart Harmon on behalf of General Counsel for Bach Homes. The only thing, we submitted this through the city's council, was just the references to the city council meeting, which we did not discuss during the special session, but we send in references to the November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen city council meeting, and then a reference to a August nineteenth, twenty twenty, Planning Commission meeting where Lake City Road was discussed. I'm happy to go into detail on what those discussions were, if you'd like, I know they were in your packet, they were at the very last page of your packet. So they were included, but we just, I only bring that up because we didn't discuss it during the special session.
I'll let the council, I mean, you feel like we have, you have all the information that's needed? I mean, I'm all for talking about it, but I think if we have it, we can just kind of talk amongst ourselves, for that point.
If we do approve this, how long is it going to take to get the, our code cleaned up? So in this specific instance, remove the unambig- unambiguity, Patrick, does that sound? How long is it going to take to get it cleaned up?
We can address some issues in our code rewrite, but this is a development agreement issue. We would need to address that in an amendment to develop, begin with the master developer.
Not on this one, but I mean, to specifically call out mixed use as commercial and residential.
We already have some proposals for that in the code rewrite, identifying what that is.
Okay.
So that will be, I think, January approval timeline.
We're going to, we're going to put the code rewrite, this is a kind of a beta, and how it might be used in our code before we bring it up. Okay, council, where do you want to go with this?
I kind of want to be careful about what I say, especially this, this is on public record, but I went, I went by the community today, and that's kind of why I wanted to mention if like outside stuff or other things. I went by the community today, and I saw nothing but high-density housing. Like, I just saw apartments, I saw asphalt and concrete, I didn't see walking around areas, I didn't see, I saw like one little playground area. I didn't see a planned community, to be completely honest. And when we talk about mixed use for phase two, I haven't seen anything for townhomes in phase two yet. I see nothing but apartments planned and built. So I just feel that the spirit, for sure, of this agreement, and what Buck Sweeney said years ago about being a collaborative agreement with the city, and kind of like what we just talked about, is very far removed from this. To be completely very honest, I, I didn't see any first-floor retail, I didn't see any commercial, I saw the big warehouse, I guess it's in phase one, and then I saw asphalt and concrete. And even the townhomes, to be honest, I mean, yes, they're townhomes legally and everything, but they are crammed in like apartments. They're not like the townhomes that I've lived in, or that have green space or anything like that, it's just, to me, it's very unwelcoming, and there's no sense of community in it. And when I think about, and so I went back and watched the city council meeting that I showed y'all earlier, of y'all sitting around up here, and I heard the comments that were said from people like Kevin Barnes about bait and switch. I heard what Stacy said about ethical agreements, if not legal agreements. I heard Buck Sweeney sit at the stand and talk about, as I said, collaborating with the city. And I feel that what has happened over the past four years is everything that you worried about, everything that Kevin worried about, and everything that Buck, as I said on the record, was that this was going to be a collaborative agreement between the city and this agreement, and it's not there at all. And so I feel, when we talk about intent, like in these statements where we talk about intent, because there's not explicit writing, I feel like the intent of this planned community to have retail, mixed commercial, mixed townhomes and stuff like that, is just not there, to be very, very blunt. And I feel that we have been hard done by, to be completely honest, as a city. And I, as I said, maybe there's nothing explicit that says in phase two there has to be mix of commercial. I looked over the concept plans, and that's what I was asking you about, David, it's like, is this a legally binding document? I looked at the traffic studies, and it does say stuff like phase two, mixed use, but as I said, I don't see any townhomes in phase two at all either. I see literally a bunch of, and I'm going to keep on saying this, a bunch of asphalt and concrete plowed into this area with a couple warehouses on the outskirts. And to me, that's not a community, to me, that doesn't meet anything of the intent of this, and it feels, at the very least, disingenuous from the developer. So I hope I didn't say anything that's going to be out of line or anything, but that's how I feel, as someone who's new, I mean, and this is going to, as I said, this is a hundred percent why we were talking about, like, having in writing with this thing south of the highway, this triangle piece, is, because I'm thinking about this, where I feel, I don't want to say dishonest, because we can't talk about people's honesty or something like that, but I would say at the very least, disingenuous statements, and not meaning the spirit of the planned community. So that's what I got, Mayor, to start on.
I love your, I thought, I love your thoughts and your expression, I a hundred percent agree. We're in a tough spot, but you're absolutely right. You, what we heard and what we have is two different things, and you know what? We're, we're getting pushed in a legal way, perhaps, depending on what we do here, but they have to have ownership too. It's, it's reputations on the line and how they feel about, but I couldn't agree more. I went down there, I drove it, and it feels very unplanned, maybe bad on us at this one, at this point, for not seeing that, maybe not having the right agreement in place, but it is what it is.
And I'm sorry, I actually have to, I should say something, because I don't want this to turn into a rant, yeah, but I'm going to turn it into a rant. It's like, you also said something, Mayor, about process during that meeting too, like you felt that Buck was not following process and bringing stuff in that he hadn't brought to the planning commission. And something else, as I said, I'm going to keep going back to this, because Buck said he wanted a collaborative partnership with the city, and then when I read this appeal, where there's a legal team bringing in the biggest stick possible, which is the equal protection clause, like, they're the victim, they're using Civil War amendments to say that they're the victims and that we are doing the wrong thing, and that it's arbitrary, it's without basis, and that to me, and that's bullcrap, to be completely honest. And it's offensive to me, as someone who loves the Constitution, to have them use those kind of big sticks. But even beyond that, it's just looking at a partnership, once again, to bring in a legal team, they never talked to me about it, they didn't say, hey, the DRC said this, let's talk about how we can work this out, I know Clarky and I kind of talked about like, hey, what can we negotiate or work with? They didn't bring up to, as far as I know, they didn't bring it to any of us, hey, this is the DRC's decision. They went and got the biggest stick possible, which is the Constitution, to try and say, hey, we're a victim, and that you're not treating this right. And that is, once again, it does, it tells me they don't want to be a partner in this situation, that they're coming in here as big at guns as possible, and said, you're going to do what we say, and we're going to finish this transaction. And the residents, and this is something that Christine, she's not here anymore, but when she talked about in the planning commission meetings before the- when she talked about in the Planning Commission meetings before the May 2021 thing, she said, we're focused on the residents. And this development agreement is not focused on the residents, 100%. So, when we as a city council, and maybe we are forced into a, like kind of painted ourselves into a corner, but the Planning Commission, the city council then, the city council now, city staff, we've all made it as clear as possible to the residents that this is not right. And I think that needs to be on the public record, that they, that from the beginning, we wanted to be focused on the residents and build a planned community that was focused on the residents, and that the developers are very much focused not on the residents and on themselves. So, that's my rant.
You're really picking at a scap here, I'm sorry. You know, I think, yeah, I think expressing yourself is great. You spoke a lot of what I felt. Thank you very much. So, Heather, where do you want to go?
I mean, I was going to make a very similar sentiment, that I feel like going through this process, and it wasn't the current applicant in front of us that was actually part of it, and I recognize that, but going through this process, this development agreement was not what it was billed to be. If you look at the intent of it, it is, what we have and what is coming before us is not, it is, anybody who reads it or watches it has to agree that it is not what we, what was intended and what was pitched to us. I am feeling a little bit forced into a position based on where we are, but I do feel betrayed, not by you. I don't feel, it's not, I understand what has happened and where we are and how we're sitting here, but I do feel betrayed. And that's unfortunate because developers are who build our city, and they are, our intent is always to be partners with them. We want them to do good. We want them to build something great, but we're reliant on what they end up doing, and we're trying not to regulate everything to pieces, and yet sometimes it blows in our face and it's unfair to the residents who live here.
I just, you know, we talked, Mr. Stuart, we talked, you know where we sit. You've been here. And while this isn't necessarily, you know, the agreement and everything that brought us to this point was preceded you, but when we talked about, I went over that night and I went through your development, and I looked for the yoga studio. I walked around and I tried to find this. I couldn't, I couldn't find them. That doesn't mean they're not there. I just couldn't find them as I went through there. And I really hoped that maybe there was this element of partnership, though legally, by what we're facing right now, there wouldn't have to be, where maybe we could get some consideration just by the goodness of a partnership that would say, you know what, we get the spot that you're in, and we're coming to the city and we're going to be a partner. So, you know what, it's not our standard practice, but we're going to look at some kind of space in the first floor that would accommodate. It won't be what you had completely hoped, and it wasn't what part of that agreement, you know, that we talked about, when we talked about this committee would be there, but we're going to put some skin in the game this way so that you would understand. Are you obligated to do that? Absolutely not. As a partner to the city, would that have been awesome? It would have been fantastic. Again, do you have to? No, you don't. But that would have gone a long way, but it's clear that that's not coming forward. And so, in my mind, we just got to make the call. Do we want to battle this legally and drag it on because, or do we want to, you know, cut bait and move on? It's not appealing in either direction, but...
I think my, I don't, I'm guessing the answer to this really is that there isn't anything we can do, but there is a little bit left in, sorry, land left in the development agreement. Is there any way to enforce the intent by that, or do we need to come back with an amendment to that agreement in order to do that? An amendment. Okay. That's not going to happen.
Did you say, because I know, I guess, then?
So, again, a limited issue that's before the council today is the DRC appeal.
Yeah, it's just this. Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's a discussion for another time, but, you know.
Mayor, if I could, I just, you made a reference earlier about reputation, and I think that matters, and I think, I feel bad because I think Bock carries a good reputation in the industry. And I'm not quite sure how you all ended up in this scenario. But I also feel like our reputation is equally important, and the reputation of American Fork City for standing up for its residents is also equally important. I, there's other ways to do this, and I have to feel, like Tim mentioned it so, much more eloquently than I could, I think, especially when you're that invested and passionate about it. And I sure wish we could have come to the table with, hey, we find ourselves in a position that doesn't really work. How can we work together? Because that's not how I felt. I'm sorry if that's not what, or if that's what you've done and you've come into the city and that wasn't related to us, but I think you can feel that the council, at least, certainly doesn't feel like there was a desire to collaborate. And it's a fault of mine, but I don't forget easily. And that's not a threat, that's not a whatever, that's just, it's that simple. Reputations matter, and I wished to heck that you could have come in here with a different attitude, and perhaps that's because you were painted into a corner, and maybe you were given promises that you were unable to live with. I have no idea. I certainly feel that way. This started long before, well, not long, but before I was on the council, and it's really unfortunate that every decision we make, five years later, six, seven years later, we're having a conversation with a totally different developer, and what's on our minds is how we got burned because of the reputation of developers. There are few industries that have those reputations, and most of them are self-inflicted. And I would encourage you, whatever vote happens tonight, that that be something that you consider, hey, maybe we should go back to the city, consider, is there something else that we could, you know, come to terms, come to an agreement? Maybe you can turn around and just sell it. I have no idea. I'm not offering, I'm not suggesting you to do anything other than just come to the table in a way that is a little less demanding and perhaps a little more collaborative, because I personally don't believe that our staff has done anything wrong. And so, it's really, really hard to cast a vote, to not uphold what I feel like is the actual prudent decision, and yet with the threat of legal ramification, well, okay, which is it?
Yeah, exactly. That's the decision to be made.
That's an unfortunate position to be put in.
I'm sorry, I got to just, the thing that I'm feeling disappointed about, that this PC zone we had, it was just really special. I mean, the ability to have that contiguous land and really say, let's do something different with it because of just the size of it and its nature, and let's create a community. And it just, it hasn't happened. We're going to get hit by the legislature. They're going to say this, this, and this, and it is going to be, it has historically been cities against this or that. There seems to be, there's battle lines that are kind of drawn with housing. So, this is going to be one that will be an example. I have no problem sharing this with people as to what happened, why, and there's details to this that we can share. So, I, you know what, let's go to a vote and see where we go with it, and we'll get off our soapbox, you know?
I very rarely get a soapbox, like go on a soapbox. This is one time I feel justified.
I see.
Same. I always do my soapbox.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the city council reverse the development review committee's denial of the application of the Lake City Road development in Phase Two, and hereby approve the application subject to all conditions and requirements imposed by the city code development agreement and applicable ordinances. Should I read the rest? The council finds that based on the record and testimony presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the applicable provisions of the city code sufficient to warrant application approval, and that any remaining unresolved technical or procedural items must be appropriately addressed as part of the subsequent development review process. The decision pertains solely to the Lake City Road development in Phase Two and is based on the specific facts and circumstances associated with this application as presented in the appeal. Nothing in this decision can be construed to alter, waive, or otherwise affect the interpretation of application or enforcement of the development agreement, annexation agreement, ordinances, or applicable codes as they relate to any other phase of the development or any other remaining or future phases. Each subsequent phase of the development shall be evaluated independently based on its own facts, submittals, and applicable requirements at the time of review. This decision does not establish precedent for nor bind the city council staff or reviewing bodies with respect to any future development application for any other phase.
Okay. How about motion by Councilmember Carroll?
I'll second. And Mayor, when we had this question, I just, maybe this is for my own satisfaction, so let me know when I'm good to ask a question.
Well, I have a motion by Councilman, or girl second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion on this motion?
So, this is a question for our good gentleman from Bock. You don't have to answer. Not required, not at all. But honestly, do you guys see at all where we're coming from on this?
Councilmember Taylor, we probably need to finish the vote at this point before re-engaging with the applicant.
Okay. All right. I'll go, I'm going to take a vote, and then we'll have the applicant come forward and address us. Councilmember Holly.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter. Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
I'll hold my vote. I'll hold my nose and go. But...
Okay, we're going to want to hear from the applicant. We're going to have you come forward. Please state your name for the public record.
Thank you, Stuart.
We're open to hearing for any of you, if you'd like, so, go ahead.
Stuart Harmon from Bock Homes. Let me, if I may, I do want to answer your question, and if I may, just so that you know, there are actually 56 townhomes at the Elevate property. I can't speak to Arza, Soul Haven, Walton, I mean, Walton Townhomes, those are townhomes, but obviously, we only have developed Elevate, and there are 56 townhomes on that property that surround the outline of that property. So, I don't know why you weren't able to see them. I'm sorry you weren't, but they are there. We do, I mean, I can see where the city council is coming from. I think, as I told you during the special session, I spent four years on the city council. I've sat in your seat. I've also sat in the seat as an attorney representing cities. In fact, I represented your city on some litigation matters, not related to development, but I've sat in that seat. I've sat in the seat of defending other cities in equal protection violation claims. And so, I know both sides of it. I know the sides of the developer now, and I know the side of defending a city and being on the city's side of things. The challenge that we have, and I hope that the city can understand this, the challenge that we have is that we believe, I mean, our perspective is that the development has been developed so far to date as it was intended, as you look at everything that's happened.
That directly goes against, if you'd like me to read what you wrote, because you know, you say, "The city's failure to require compliance with agreements in Phase One and Three does not shift the commercial square footage burden to another phase." You can't have it both ways. You can't say, right there you say...
And I'm not. What I'm saying is, if you look at the development to date, what has been developed to date, it shows exactly what the intention of Buck Sweeney and the other developers was. Phase One and Phase Five, all commercial, right? I'm sorry, obviously, it's not on Bock Homes as to why the city didn't get the commercial development you were hoping for in those phases. It seems like clearly you did not, and I don't know why Light Industrial got approved in those areas that were designated as commercial. But, you know, when you look at the, at the, at the meeting minutes from those meetings, your city administrator and others say very clearly, hey, this is what the intent is, that there's commercial over here, there's residential over here, and that's what's happened so far. I mean, when you look at Phase Three, that's exactly what happened. Phase Three is completely built out with zero commercial in it. Now, I agree, Phase Three was specifically identified as an area that was supposed to have walking trails through it, and you're absolutely right. It's concrete and building. Phase Two was not identified as having walking trails through it.
I see it, by the way, the concept plan has a walking trail.
Through Phase Two?
Yeah, and there's a red arrow.
Well, which part of Phase Two?
I mean, it doesn't matter. You said there was no Phase Two, but Phase Two concept plan has a red arrow for pedestrian like that.
But, you know, Phase Three has none of those things. It's developed. Phase Two, so far, what's been developed, Elevate, is, and what we're asking for with High Point and proposing with Summit is exactly in line with what was done in Elevate. And so, that's the challenge that we're in, is that, is that we come forward with a proposal that is the same thing basically, but a higher standard than what we put forth in Elevate, and now it feels as though we're getting treated differently than, I mean, we're getting treated differently than we were treated before, not just what other developers were, how other developers were treated with Soul Haven and Arza. But, so, it is difficult. I get it that the city council, you want commercial. Really, what you want is retail, it sounds like there. But, you know, the challenge as well, and I was thinking about this earlier today, the way the annexation agreement, the way your development, the development agreement is written, the memorandum of understanding, but even your code regarding a planned development community is written, I mean, the way that's all written, we could propose this apartment complex with self-storage units there, and that would qualify as commercial. And I'm pretty sure that's not what the city wants.
I've got a motion in a second. Thank you for coming up. I'm going to go right into it. Just go into it, or actually, that's the vote. You're right, you're right. Okay. I just put that on my paper, and I'll look back. So, okay. Item number six, we will not be having a closed session this evening, so I'll move on to item number seven. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do you.
Yeah, the motion by Councilmember John, seconded by Councilmember Holly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any follow-ups? Okay, you adjourn.